I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which is founded on one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any liquor licenses?
No. None? Are we going to, um, do special motions on our October and November?
Nope, it'll be all under consent agenda.
It can all work?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I make a motion to approve several listed items of the agenda. The December third, October and November need minutes. The account payable, the jail and a monthly report of November, and there is no liquor license.
Second motion.
Does anyone have any questions about the rest of the agenda or additions?
Is this being all caught up now?
I think so.
Okay.
As far as...
We haven't done all this yet.
Are you talking about minutes?
Yeah.
No, this is just minutes I've done.
Yeah.
So, and then October and November, those are recording speeds, reporting, not minutes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Even a motion made and seconded, except the consent agenda as is. Are there any further questions? Are you down all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. I'm a comment. Not at this time. I won't go into great detail, but I spent, four days in the great state of California. Well, we would have a lot of discussion on that. I won't go into great detail right now, but some of the things that we went through was especially helpful, will be helpful to us later on here in Iowa as, emergency management department, what they had to go through with the fire they had six years ago, and how it was all rebuilt within six years. You can't tell there was a fire there, believe it or not. Were total mass destructions of block after block after block, just, you could draw a line right down the street. This side over here, no damage. This side over here, completely destroyed. Yeah, the massive people they had to try and find housing and things for, but, what they had to do to revise their EMA association to qualify, but the federal government is unreal, so hopefully we don't have.
Amen.
I will put there.
Richard, why don't you tell, um, how did you get there? By who, what did you represent?
Oh, through the Iowa State Associations. I sat on their board as the Board of Director for, National Organization of Counties, I'm the state representative for the state of Iowa. Grant Veder, who retired this past week as our...
This is last meeting?
Last meeting. He was what they called their parliamentary procedure person. He oversaw the minutes. He would make sure the minutes were correctly, and then he would be surprised the number of people that don't understand parliamentary procedure, even though they've been in major office for years. Grant would clear his voice and the president goes, "Is there a problem, Grant?" "Yes." He proceeded to tell the guy what he was doing wrong, and I mean, the poor guy would just kind of look back down at his chair and, and...
Good for you.
No, Grant, he's going to be missed, but he made his last, help me out, Lonnie. He does the end of the meetings all the time. Lyrics. Lyrics. Anyway, he makes up lyrics for the meetings, and let me tell you, it was,
Smart guy.
Smart guy. It was really interesting. He has, he's printed a book of lyrics that he's made of meetings.
Grant was the supervisor of what county?
No, he was the manager for Blacktop County together.
Elka County?
Blacktop.
Blacktop. Are you done, Richard?
Yeah.
So I had a really busy week. I had a Golden Hills that we are still interviewing for the administration, and I think we have come down to a wonderful gal. She is going to be quite an asset for the, for the organization. So we've got a couple more today and Thursday that we're going to meet. I went to Creston to the District Four Supervisor Meeting. That's always interesting. That's when, supervisors, auditors all come from Adams, Adair, Claire to Taylor and Union. We met at the Pizza Ranch. And our problems is what everybody else has problems with. So it's always interesting if some have a idea and it works. We all, networking is so valuable, and I have thoroughly enjoyed. So Tom Shipley, which is the, uh, he spoke on carbon solution, the pipeline, that really razzed a lot of people. They're still fighting the wind turbines. I think solar is going to be a main thing in the state of Iowa because you can do something underneath the solar. So that is being passed a little bit faster in other counties. Madison County is really sorry that they had done so much and they weren't prepared, so it was interesting to hear all the problems they have to go through. So I'm very proud of them. As far as we have a, a plan that, um, if they want to take enter, it's quite extensive. So I feel like we've got a great backbone that we can rely on. And that was, that was pretty, pretty interesting. And I said my final goodbyes. They want me to stay, and I said, "I don't think I am. I'm ready to move on to more interesting and fun things." So with that, it, it was a good full week. And that's it.
Mr. Ferrell, we're up to you. All right, this general discussion items today. Uh, first one is about the road use agreement plan. Did you have one that you signed? I know they sent over.
Yep. I'll, I'll email it out today.
Okay, then I'll just sign it and scan it back to you.
Actually. Okay.
I printed just the signature page. And I attended the annual county engineers conference this past week. As always, really good conference. Yeah, it was good. The Kevin and Dick Vance were, so, learned some good stuff, learned some different things. They're changing with our construction administration, patio stuff. But good changes though, get some more seatless and going to upgrade things to two or three spots. Some good things there. Uh, last year, they've had it before, but they don't have funds available for a sign replacement program. Counties can get up to $10,000 for, as a reimbursement for signs that replaced in that year. We submitted application last year, and they were overwhelmed with applications. They opened it up at midnight. I think by 2:00 AM they closed it because we submitted at 7:00 AM. So we're not accepting them. So we're, uh, we're going to get prepared. They're not going to accept them, I think, until February this year, January, February, and, uh...
That is unfair. They should have said, yeah.
For $10,000 potentially, um, I'm gonna talk Eric into coming in and getting two hours at midnight.
Touch the bike.
12:00. Hopefully we get 10 grand for that.
Okay.
We'll see. I don't think I reported back when I attended Hungry Canyon's meeting. We took a project to them out on Dopney Road, just west of Fairland Boulevard Street. There's a failing CMP there. It's a six-foot diameter, so pretty large one. Uh, we're going to put a drop inlet CMP, we'll completely replace the whole thing. And Hungry Canyon's alliance, as you know, covers great control structures, so not the actual pipe itself, but the, the riser and the dirtwork associated with that, part of the load and traffic control stuff like that, they would help pay for.
They would help.
Yeah, so I took it to them with the application. Vance has been working on the design, so we had some plans and situation sheets for them. And we're awarded $40,000 for that project.
You and your contractor side is going to be helping.
It's going to help a lot.
Tremendous.
And, um, seems Vance is, he's good for it. He actually likes it, so, I mean, it's not, he's showing him this and he does this. It's, here's what we need, and then he figures out. He's doing YouTube videos, talking to other people, we do whatever, just playing around the program and he gets to it. So he's a huge asset, we know.
Gee, that's wonderful.
Yeah, so that's really good. He's looking at our survey equipment. I do have $20,000 budget in this current fiscal year.
You guys need to upgrade. You guys can use the same stuff I used.
Yeah, so we're going to be taking in his all that and probably looking to purchase that.
And what was that your?
That for the stuff you used.
And what is that your purchase?
It's...
What are you purchasing?
It'd be survey equipment. Updating that.
I usually don't have one.
You, um, top con?
Through that, I just transferred some crumbs.
Yep. So, um, yeah, that was good. $40,000.
Put in your phone.
We, uh, might run into some hiccups. So with the DOT, there's a bid threshold. If you estimate a project to be over $115,000, you have to put it out for competitive bids.
Over 15?
115,000. And my preliminary estimate for it is actually the 160,000. So I wanted to do this with our own crews and not put up for bids, so I reached out to the DOT. And there's, I put the bid together using numbers as if you are hiring them out. So obviously that's going to be inflated for different things. You know, I have like $10,000 just to have the contractor come in, stuff like that. Traffic control, 7,500. So she said, the DOT, you can, since your estimate is over, you can put it out for bids, but then you can show what you think would cost for your own guys. You accept all the bids that come in. You look at them, if your county crews is the lowest, you reject all of the bids and you go with three counties. Or the other option is what I'm going to first try, is I'm going to put a legitimate estimate together with our county crews. So taking out some of that mobilization, just going to see equipment, hours, you know, material, stuff like that. And if that is less than 90% of the 115,000, then we're okay to just use our crews and not put it out for bid. So I'll put those numbers together because I need it in both scenarios anyways. And go from there. But if they have to put it out for bid, then it's going to be a little bit longer process. And if it is truly going to be over $100,000 to fix this, then, um, we'll try to put it next week or two.
And this is something you guys can do.
They can do it.
Do a good job.
It'd be great.
I say, why not? It works, right?
And I know, I think, um, a different county got in trouble because they would build their own bridges and they wouldn't put them up for bid. And the DOT is like, hey, this is over 115,000, so we do have to be careful. They do look for that, so. Play your cards right.
You say, Lonnie?
Yep.
This will be yourself.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
It'd be great experience for the, the bridge crew. They haven't done a project that big. Well, there's won't be a bridge, but still. So other than that, last thing to report, I'm trying to get a safety meeting for next week, next Wednesday. I don't have a speaker, so I'm putting all the content together. So I will, working hard on it today and tomorrow and see if I can get three, four hours of content. But we'll have it next Wednesday or Thursday. Shooting for Wednesday at 18:00.
Okay.
And then our Christmas party is, uh, December 23rd at the Cape Creek here up in Slaughter, so 11:30.
Oh. That's a great place.
Yeah. Your local 2:10.
This is Paltlove?
Yeah. Paltlove. I'll confirm, uh, next board meeting, as far as I'm seeing it, it'll be, uh, following day.
Okay.
That is the end of my general discussion.
I have not gotten any meaningful calls or such like. There's one we need to talk about.
Call me, you know, come on down.
Then, of course, snow will be flying, so are you ready?
It was when I came up here.
Right. That was just to make things pretty.
Yeah, all the equipment ready to go.
I bet it is. Good.
Yeah, there's some of your things that we're continuing to fix since we haven't had time. Ready to go.
Good for you.
We have our, uh...
You're a good heater.
We have our, uh, the seasonal self-help operator. He's officially started in all the books and kind of familiar with the truck and the route and everything, so. Good, because our truck driver is going out for surgery, uh, 11:10, so, yeah, and they're starting that. Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, Richard's been out of, out of the state, so nobody calls him when they know he's gone. So you haven't gotten any meaningful calls, right, Richard?
Nope. But you did play police for us. I'm just kidding. You played police for us?
Yeah.
Someone nearby too. We did appreciate that.
And then Jacob, just, so I know, uh, we have that public hearing at 9:30 for Silver Springs.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have any comments on that or anything?
Nope, I don't have any comments. Basically, after that, I'll go out there with him and have him invite each GM team or whoever built it.
Okay.
Which, right. I don't know if, I don't know whether there's actual contract. And so, no other construction.
None of us know.
Just kind of maybe that, kind of walk through, make a little point, so it's for whatever, with that, update the content, but...
Then you want me just to let you know and have you come up official?
That's it.
Preliminary. Have you approved it, sir?
Yeah, do you want me to come back later today? Today?
Whatever.
Yep.
Make sure.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jacob. Do I need to show you those liners that I had?
Oh, yeah.
Any use?
I don't think so.
Okay.
They're kind of nice, but they're also big.
They're huge.
They're for like 11, 12, 13 acres.
Maybe I'll set these for those. They're huge.
Oh, yeah?
Four five? It'd be great for you. Or brand new up there. Thanks, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good haircut part?
Good side?
Old supervisor. He's got hair cut, he's not getting any people. I'm afraid of a meeting.
He'd be in charge of. He'd get hold of, get up, he says, "Yeah, be there in five minutes. I can make it." And we're on it.
Forkhouse bluff, sir, yeah.
Nah, he'd go cut hair and then he'd come back. He says, "What would you guys decide?" Next on the agenda is to approve Resolution 2444, Construction Evaluation. Basically, it's with DNR, kind of construction or building of...
Confinements.
Hog confinements and things. It's just to save us, protect us, or however you want to put it.
Annual thing. I would make the motion to approve Resolution 2444, the 2025 Construction Evaluation Resolution for Confinements with the U.S.
I second that. Something we do every year.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 2444, Construction Evaluation Resolution. It's an annual assignment that protects us with DNR on the, occasionally would have a hog confinement or poultry confinement or something show up, cattle.
They have their own.
They have their own rules, regulations.
It helps us to get into their program.
No other discussion, we'll have roll call.
Benton? Yes. Maybe Crouch?
Yes.
Good job on the roll call, Amber.
Huh?
Good job on the roll.
Thanks. I'll let you use your other pipe.
You want? Want to use this one?
No, I have one right here.
Got one there.
Okay, next on the list is,
Ms. Katie?
Uh, consideration formal action on heat mill childcare annual preparation.
I know. Okay. Wrong one, Katie.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So, bringing this back, um, when it was approved, it say that the each year the board would determine where the $20,000 appropriation would come from?
$20,000 annually was...
Yep, until 2028. And so I didn't know. I know we kind of tabled it, but I essentially got these ARPA numbers.
Yes.
And also, um, I, I have some loss numbers. They're not perfect, but they're close, I think. So it's kind of, however you guys want to do it, you want to look at your actuals at the top on the right-hand corner. This is lost. Now, this does include some lodging, consultancy fund, so I have to do a little bit more.
I think you have to do a little bit of, yeah.
But this is what it looks like right now. So under actuals, your current fund balance is 438 change, but like I said, some of that's lodging. I just don't know how much of it is yet.
Sure.
But I, I will get that figured out before the next meeting. But I think since we have promised it is in October, I'd like to get this kind of funded so we can pay by the end of the year.
Thank you for this.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We just kind of wanted to know where we are for you.
Yep. And now I don't, and the other thing I should, the other thing I should say is I'm not sure what other, what other commitments you made with lost.
Yes.
So that's another thing I need to dig into.
Another, the only other one I worry about or want to keep in mind is what would be the county engineer out of this?
And I already made their second transfer.
Okay.
That was done yesterday. That includes, that amount is included in this.
Yeah, this is a good split. Three ways.
So I didn't know, um, also, as part of the ARPA funding, we also received L A T C F, L A T C F funds. And those are a little less restrictive, and I don't think we have to spend them by a certain date.
Tell me what that means. L A T C F, never heard of that.
It is, um, I gotta look it up. I can't remember. Get our confidence.
Is that a government funding? Oh, it is.
And I think what I'm hearing is we can actually just, it's local assistance and travel consistency fund. So it goes into our ARPA fund.
It goes into our government?
Yeah.
It's, it's in that fund with our stuff. We had two payments to that, and I believe we can use that how we see fit. So you could for this year, do your preparation on that.
Are these actual ARPA funds then? Are they listed that way, or is it just, it's just a fund that we have to put in ARPA and order to spend it?
Yeah, I believe so. I believe it.
Find someplace to put them.
Yeah.
Same thing we had to do with, with, uh, Nister Productions. We got a large funding source. Didn't come from them, but we, that's where we had to put it, but there's no restrictions on payout.
Yep, and I think that's what this is. I need to double check, but, um, that's a possibility. I mean, you could pay out of our funds, but I just want to get that back on the agenda so we can make that estimation.
Well, and we do have some commitments coming out of our, but we need to stay there. Remember you guys.
And then going forward, you will, when I work on the budget, we work on the budget, then it will be included so that we know where it's going to come from the next week. Same with the, um, I can't remember which one. We'll talk about in our work session.
Do you think, uh, lost would be the best for this right now, or do you think ARPA would be?
I think ARPA.
I would, I would prefer that. I would.
I would need to attempt to let chat about our lost.
I agree, because I don't know all the things, incidentals. That's why this is very...
Well, ARPA funds need spent too, so let's, let's get rid of them.
Okay.
I'll make a motion on that.
Yeah, I would do that. I'll make a motion to, uh, pay the $20,000. This be the... Yeah, I would say that. I'll make a motion to, uh, pay the $20,000. Would this be, this is for twenty-twenty-four?
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-four payment of $20,000 to the East Mill Childcare.
And this is our first payment, correct?
It is. Well, technically it's your second payment. Uh, it is, oh, we did give it one last year? Well, you gave them the initial number fifteen.
The chunk, yes.
And then you said every year in October for the next five years, we'll give you twenty, ninety. So it's right.
Out of ARPA if I didn't say that to the floor.
All right, so what hap, my second half of it. So what happens if we dissolve our ARPA funds within five years?
We need to dissolve it sooner than that.
Yeah, you gotta solve it sooner.
I completely understand that, but I mean, I will.
Well, we're just trying to get rid of what we had.
Right.
We can't.
And when I, we're trying.
I'm sorry, I'm.
No, I'm sorry. I talked over you. You can say.
So if we, we carry anything over, we supposedly have to pay that back to ARPA for the government.
I understand that, but we gotta remember to take.
Well, that's reason when we go through our budget coming up, we're, it will be put in loss. It will lower the income.
Or some, yeah, when we budget, we'll include it in the budget picture, so it doesn't.
We could appropriate the, so.
No. Do the land money.
Or we can take it out of Sheriff's budget.
Hundred grand.
Sheriff, can we take it out of your budget with Iran?
Sure.
Talk about it, Jim.
And I did.
Well, everybody, everybody out there at that meeting, that was one of the big conversations coming up, what everybody was gonna try and how to get rid of their money. And there is one county in California that is setting on $750,000. And they have no place to spend it.
You know what, Richard, that is just hard to imagine.
I know.
But it's just hard to imagine.
Well, by the, how many years, how many years have we had this?
Absolutely.
Four years? Can't tell me you haven't had time to spend that money.
A town would like to have.
Yeah.
I felt sorry for them.
Exactly.
Not even a little bit. Not even a little bit.
So we have a motion on the floor made and seconded to pay, uh, $20,000 to East Mill Childcare Annual Appropriations to come out of remaining of ARPA funding, correct?
Correct.
Are there any further discussions, questions? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay. Joe coming in for this or?
No, I mean. It's just you guys.
Jill, you.
Yeah, obviously, you guys need to decide if you want to fill the vacancy by appointment or by special election. And so we just need, we need a official motion so that way that starts the wheels.
I think the motion to fill the upcoming treasury vacancy by appointment.
I don't want to go through the expanse of a special election. That's too much money for the county when we can just pick and choose. So I.
And the public can call for it after.
Right, they got what, fifteen days, thirty days, somebody, fifteen or thirty days, something like that.
They have fourteen days.
Fourteen days?
After, uh, the appointment.
Coming us verified, signature, right?
And it'll go off the number, the percentage, I believe, of the last election, which would be the general election. So we can get those numbers.
You did second it. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to take action on filling upcoming treasury treasure vacancy. Motion is to do it by appointment. Are there any other discussion? Concerns? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Code? Motion carries. We'll have to wait a while. That's for.
And I think going forward on these public hearings, can I just set it for eight fifteen? And then it will, we can put it down, but at least that would, that way we wouldn't have to wait until a certain time.
If you set a period, do you want to have it?
Yeah, you gotta have it.
Yeah.
At that time.
It's hard to guess.
It's so hard.
It is. It is. Because you never know how the res-.
Yeah, it's maybe the.
Or sometimes we.
No, I know. I just, I know it's the same when we do, we just do them all at seven o'clock and then we will see one after the other.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As you said.
Yeah.
And how do we, how do we do a resolution when he's uncorrected or we don't know if Jake?
What do you mean?
Well, he's got to read the, the plat, correct, to make sure.
This is just a plenary plat.
Yep. So if there's a mistake or whatever, or he needs to change, he can still do that?
We could, yes.
See what I mean?
Well, the, the, the plenary plat is a plan. And every once we did it, so we're approving it.
Okay, okay, so he.
That's already happened.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure he was on board.
Yeah, they, they submit them for review and make sure that all the company documents are, whether it's covenants, whatever else. Plenary plat, there's a checklist that we want to follow your form or something like that. Once everything is in order, then choose.
Okay, and that's been all. Okay.
I.
Yes, yeah.
Hey, uh, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn meeting till nine twenty. And we will resume at that time.
I make that motion?
It's been a motion made and seconded that, uh, we adjourn until nine twenty PM.
AM.
AM. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we're not coming back now. They don't, they were sleeping.
Think we got a little jet lag going on or what, Richard?
We're still. You got your. No. They're gonna turn us off if they go. Win two weeks.